Good evening. Welcome to our December 10th Hilltop Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. We will call this meeting to order. First item, if you will please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we move into our moment of silence, I'd like to call on Commissioner Windley, who has a couple of comments that he would like to share.
Thank you. I'd like for everybody to please keep the Cottrell family in their thoughts and prayers. Thirteen-year-old Andy was in an accident last month. He is the center of the First Flight Middle School football team, broke both ankles severely. And he is on a very tough and long road to recovery, and the whole family is really having to gather around him and make sacrifices to help him get better. I work with his mom and I know his father very well. He is a school resource officer at First Flight Middle School. So please think of the Cottrell family in your moment of silence. But also, I'd be very remiss not to mention Jennifer Wall. I'm sure there's people in this room who know Jennifer and care for her. Jennifer was the thirty-six-year-old owner of Outer Banks Shipping Station, my neighbor at Walgreens, somebody I visited three to four times a week. And I think everybody's aware that she'd lost her life, her cancer, battle with cancer last month. A very wonderful person, so please think of the Wall family and the Haas family.
Thank you. Move on to agenda approval.
The motion we approve, the agenda has some minutes.
Question a second, any discussion? All those in favor with aye please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, this is the first time then we move on to our public comment period. It's an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on any topic of their choosing to do so. We do ask if you're speaking, during public comment time, if you're speaking as an individual, we ask for you to please try to keep your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you could keep those comments to five minutes. We had a sign-up sheet, so we'll start from the sign-up sheet, but if you did not sign up, no worries, we'll call from the floor after we start, after we work from the sign-up sheet. So first, I'd like to welcome Patty Armstead. Patty, welcome. If you would like to approach the podium. When you do approach the podium to speak this evening, if you would identify yourself by name and address, please.
Okay. I'm Patty Armstead. I live at sixteen oh five Wood Duck Lane. You've all seen me here before. And I'm a resident voter and a concerned citizen. And I just, my motivation for being here this evening is to let you know my sincere belief that Skip Jones would be an invaluable addition to this board. He has been a member of our community for over forty years. He has volunteered on numerous boards and volunteered his time and his talents to our town. My encounters with Skip have been right here in this town hall, where I've been very impressed with his knowledge and dedication to our community. And I don't think that you could find a better, more committed person for this position to fill this vacancy. He has the background and the know-how to hit the ground running, and he has proven his dedication to our town time and time again, and I hope that you will honor his service by voting him, for him to fill this vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Thanks, Patty.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for the time. My name is Marsha Johnson. I live at fourteen oh one Harpoon Court off of Landing Drive. And I just want to address some situations that I personally have encountered with the Saga development of Landing Drive. My home is at the end of Harpoon Court, which is what's up against the development, so I'm in the thick of it for, since June. And some things that we were told at town hall meetings are not true or coming to pass. And first of all, I'd like to ask, who is, who from the town is overseeing their step-by-steps of what they're doing over there? Like who's hands-on? Well, I guess you respond after, after I, okay, never mind. Okay. So we were told they were going to keep all the trees possible, they were going to only cut out for the houses, and that they wanted to respect the woods and make it, you know, keep it the forest it was. And the reason they weren't putting in septic tanks was so that they could do that, and they put in the public utilities. And well, now they have done a clean sweep like a football field and it left no trees, stripped it all the way down. And it's a little late now to talk about that, but they've got two more phases to go. So I don't know who was overseeing that or not overseeing that, and it was done, and it's really upsetting. Now they've come in and put in about a four-foot lot buildup of sand, which horrifies me because we discussed the flooding that that would cause. They also guaranteed and reassured me that there wouldn't be any lot buildup because they weren't putting in septic tanks. So now there's this massive lot buildup. I've literally had dreams and nightmares of the water flooding my house and my yard. And from what y'all said, well, that's a civil problem, and I'll just have to go to the people that buy the land to deal with that. Nobody wanted to discuss it as, you know, before this type of thing would happen. They come in and work very early and very late. I've understood that your town law is seven to five, I think. They're coming in way before seven in the morning, they're staying way after five at night, to the point of they're out there beep, beep, beep. This is six days a week in my yard, basically, until after dark with floodlights on now. They're, they're until like six o'clock at night. I never get a moment's peace. I work at home, my dishes rattle, my picture frames in my house shaking off the walls because I'm in the middle of like an earthquake every day. I was wondering if there's any way they can remove the beeping sound on these tractors while they're working. It's just really, really rough. They also installed a power box that they discussed with me, like a power box. And I said, well, I've already got one on one corner of my yard from old, old power box use. That's the green standard power box. And they went in to put a power box in for this new community, which they have acres of land to put it in, but they decided to come within four inches of my property line. And from what I understand, it's going to be a six by six by six tall giant, like on the bypass, power box, right in, on the, I have a circular drive. I can't even get around, they've already got a concrete slab there which can be moved. And my bumper of my car can't swing around to get out of my circular drive because they put it so close. Evidently, the eight-foot easement, like you would put a house or a structure, does not apply to this. They're on the power company easement. I would like that they move that slab and get it further on into their property. And I would ask that it is also landscaped around it with trees and stuff, so it's not this giant obstruction on our street. I've talked to Bob Howser about these things, and our last phone call, he was, he was very rude to me. Not sweet like he was this summer, trying to keep me happy. He's turned a corner and just doing what they want to do. That's all.
Thank you, Marsha.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the person that you said you spoke with just recently was that?
Bob Howser.
From Saga, from, with Saga, sorry.
With Saga. So I won't be calling Saga anymore because I'm getting lies.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Do I, do I get a response?
We'll do that under response to public comment. We'll take all the public comment and then we'll respond.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sure. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, Jack, welcome.
Jack McComb, thirty-one, eighteen Bay Drive. Patty and her husband are good friends of mine. I too believe that Skip would be an outstanding member of this board. I also believe and I slightly favor Colleen as a member of the board. I think either person would do an outstanding job. Most importantly, I hope the board can resolve this problem because it's the laying decisions on, decisions that has to be made for the good of the town. So please try your best to resolve it. Flip the coin if you have to.
Thank you, Jack.
And that was Colleen's call.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no hands, I will close the public comment and we will move on to response to public comment. Patty and Jack first, just grouped you two together. Thanks for sharing your comments. We did receive a lot of comments. Obviously, that's an agenda item, so we'll discuss it further. But I must just personally say, I love the way, Jack, you started, you guys are friends. And that's the great beauty of the democratic process, is that you can be friends and still hold your opinion with, however that opinion may be, and keep moving forward as friends. So thank you both for sharing those comments. Marsha?
Yes.
Yes, we'll talk about your situation now. Any first comments from any board member before I jump in with some thoughts? Okay. So there's certain things related to the site plan and all that absolutely we as a town oversee. And I'm not sure what correspondence that we have had as town staff yet. I do think, if it has not already happened, a meeting on the site to specifically look at some of the concerns, you know, if they're blocking access for your driveway or for your use of your full driveway, that to me would signal something that shouldn't be allowed. The, as far as the, holding them accountable to things, they said, we can hold them accountable to what's on a site plan. It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, stormwater management is a requirement for that site. So I don't recall ever hearing that they can't build up, that they have to be able to manage the stormwater from the properties. So I just, I, what I would like to see, and maybe it's already happened, but I think it warrants another trip if it has happened, is someone from staff to be able to meet Ms. Johnson on the property, let her physically show their concerns, and, and look at some of these issues. Most notably of concern for me is if she's expressing she can't use part of her property for what they're doing.
Unless I misunderstood Mrs. Johnson, she was talking about the Dominion Power box?
And it's in, it's in a platted utility easement.
But it's not infringing on her driveway?
No.
It's within, it's so close, it's within inches, so the way you have to-
It's not on the property at all.
Come out of my drive, it's like so tight. Why is it, it can't be with, how many acres did they buy? It can't be a little bit further over, even just for the looks of it, it's going to be hideous.
Right. Unfortunately, if they're on their property, we don't have the ability or authority to tell them where to put it on the property.
So there's no easement, I mean, there's no regulations how close something can come to someone's property line.
But it's, it's within the easement. It is, it is where, I mean-
It's supposed to be.
Right.
There are regulations, so they do have to follow them. In a public utility regulation, they, and Casey, stop me if I, if I stumble, they acquire easements for public utilities, which gives them the right to install, maintain, and work on a public utility. These easements are where they're allowed to function. They have to put their materials and their lines and their transformers and everything within the easement, or they may not have, they, they're infringing on other properties' rights. So there are easements all over the country for utilities, but in North, in Dare, in Dare County, Landing easement actually runs behind the properties. It doesn't run down Landing Drive, it runs on the backside of the properties. And they board all their stuff, all their lines, to be able to function in the subdivision, but they're all, all the work they've done has been within their easements. And it's in the box and concrete are not even set on Ms. Johnson's property.
Mister, I forget his last name, his name was Jason with Dominion Power that was overseeing it in the beginning. And as he came and asked me, and we discussed this box situation, which I thought it was going to be this little box, like people have boxes in their yard, I didn't know it was going to be so huge. He would discuss that they wanted to put it over further. And I said, yeah, well, let's get it over there further, it's, you know, less conspicuous for me and would be nice. And he said it was Saga that said, put it up against the line.
Well, unfortunately, I don't see our ability or authority to do anything with Dominion Power or that.
I mean, another way, the regulation is the easement area, as long as they're within it, they're within the bounds of the law. I mean, if they were to go outside, it's a different, different story. But again, that bounded area is actually the, the regulation in and of itself.
But would Saga have any say as to where they put it?
No.
No, not as long as they're within, you know, if it's a hundred fifty feet long.
Well, that's what they told me.
It's wide if they're within there.
Dominion Power told me that.
So then, as far as any other, the concerns with trees and, and the building up, then I would offer for staff to need to express any of those maybe perceived incongruities, because all we can do is, as a town, is enforce what they're building towards, the site plan that's been approved. So-
Did the site plan include vegetation and trees and stuff where early in the house?
They're going to need to, that's why a meeting would be, they need to have the site plan. I would need the site plan again to look at, so.
The board wouldn't have approved, wouldn't have approved or just are not approved trees being moved. But, but the-
The staff, the staff would be more than happy to meet with Ms. Johnson on her site. And they, they do on a regular basis are onsite and, and both Planning Department and Public Services are onsite on a regular basis and communicating with Mr. Howser when things are not followed. And that's been done.
Okay.
But yes.
Debbie, I think you are right here to announce, correct me if I'm wrong, that was the vegetation, that was not a condition, that was before the board, correct?
What?
The vegetation and any clearing or exit, that was not a condition, that was before the board, that they could have put in place anyway, correct?
It was not a condition because the town doesn't regulation, regulate clearing.
Okay.
It, it would be a condition if there was a ordinance that was specific to what can and cannot be cleared, but the town does not have that ordinance, so.
And that would be like the maritime forests.
Correct. Where they do regulate what kind of- Only, there are no trees from the pad of the house. That's what maritime forests is.
And the early and late working, that can certainly be addressed. I think there was, I think there was one situation where they were trying to do some de-watering, and because we did have such a high water table at that time, did extend that just enough so that they could finally get what they needed to get done, accomplished, because if not, it just wasn't ever going to end, because the holes would keep coming, you know, coming back full of water. But other than that-
And the hours do go much later than five o'clock. I think it's eight that they require for construction to stop. And it's six on Sundays.
The town ordinance is what, from seven AM till eight PM?
Monday through Saturday.
Are you kidding me? Wow.
Any other comments?
I was thinking, if once we can, we confirm that the town type to stop is eight, and Ms. Johnson, you have the information, if they go past that and it's still loud, I would recommend calling the police, have them measure the, the sound, how loud it really is, and see if, verify that versus our town code. Maybe then we could have a conversation then, if they were working later than they should, and it was louder than it should be, you'd have proof. Any of our officers could come out and measure noise and give you a pretty firm reading if it is too loud.
Mayor, there's the way the ordinance written, I mean, they're not to work after a certain amount of time. Is that correct? The construction work is not to continue after a certain amount of time?
Period.
Right, regardless of the noise level.
It doesn't matter.
So that way, they can't have their big bright lights on or anything else, or whatever point that is, if they're working past that.
They didn't have, they, like Debbie said, they had a generator that ran for about four straight days, twenty-four hours a day. It wasn't, there weren't people there working, but it was a de-watering, and if they turned it off, it would have been running for about fourteen straight days, so we thought four was better than, because every night it would fill back up with water and they'd have to start all over. So they only get a couple hours of work in, so that was when the drainage and that's done. And it's been done for six weeks. So. And it's seven AM to eight PM. And then, Sunday's where I'm a little pick-up. I think it's nine to six.
So seven days at least.
That's on Sundays, but.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you. We will move on then to introductions and presentations. Item number one this evening is the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run presentation to the KDH Police Department for Assistance with the Annual Toy Run. And we're going to turn it over to Commissioner Gray for this presentation.
And Mayor, if you will, if you'll bear with me a minute, I'd like to come to the podium.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, and I would like to say that it's very much an honor for me to be here and present this award to our police department. They did an excellent job. They always do, every year. And we're, we're excited to be able to do that. We changed our name on the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run. We're now the Dare County Motorsports Charity Group. And in making that change, we've been able to expand into some other arenas. We're having a couple of events that are going to be happening here this year. One of them is a car show. Michael Tillet is with us tonight, and I'd like to ask Michael to come up and do a brief presentation for us, if you will. He's got some exciting things that are going to be happening, and we've partnered with him, and it's, it's just going to be epic. The number of cars that are here and what it's going to bring to the economy of the area. So Michael, tell us a little bit about that, if you will.
Oh, thanks for letting me come up and speak a little bit. Like I said, my name is Michael Tillet, and we're putting together a car event for May two thousand nineteen, which is the OBX Rod and Custom Festival. This festival is to help raise money for the Dare County Toy Run and the Children and Youth Partnership. And we're getting an overwhelming response from people all over the country and Canada coming in first weekend in May. Third and fourth is when this event's going to be. We're having people come in as early as Tuesday and stay in the whole week. We've got four hotels already booked up, and we haven't even started registration for the show until January. It's just going to be an event that this county's going to really thrive on. You've never seen anything like this. It's going to be a lot of hot wheels come to life. Some, some of the cars are going to be loud, some of them's not going to be loud, but it's just going to be a nice event. And we're going to be able to patronize a lot of different hotels, restaurants. We're doing cruises and celebrations in Manille, Naxet, Killover Hills, and Kitty Hawk. And what we're doing to make sure that all these places get the benefits of these people coming in to support this event, we're going to do a, an award to, if you go to each one of these spots, to patronize the business, donate money to the charity. We'll be able to give an award to, to the winner, as we put a name and a hat, but just want to let everyone know what was going on, so when you see all these cars running around the first week of May, you'll know what's happening. And as it gets a little closer, we're, we'll be talking to you all some more, and we're going to get a, sit down with all the police chiefs and let everybody know what's going on, so you'll know where the most cars will be, at what time they will be, as best to our ability. I appreciate your time, and it's, it's very awesome partnering up this man right here, because he's doing a good cause, and with the Children and Youth Partnership, we hope to have a yearly event to raise more money for these kids in our county. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. That, that's going to be very, very exciting. We also have with us tonight, I just want to mention them, Richard Quigley and Sarah Holt. They are not only instrumental in making sure that the toy run works, but they help out with the, with the classic car and rod show as well. Give you a little bit of history on the toy run, this is our third year. Our first year, we raised fourteen thousand dollars and we helped four hundred kids. This money stays in Dare County. The second year, we raised twenty-five thousand dollars, and we bought Christmas for five hundred and seventy-three kids. This year, and each year, I get in trouble because I always set this goal with my board of directors. We met my goal, we raised just under thirty-two thousand dollars. And we're going to be able to help a lot of kids with that. We, we changed a little bit as well, we partnered with the First Flight Society, and this year, we were honored to receive the Governor's Award for Excellence for volunteerism. That's quite an accomplishment, and we were, we were tickled about that. We also this year established three educational scholarships. One for Manille and the mainland, one for Hatteras Island, and one for the northern beaches. So we were, we were proud of that as well. This year's event celebrated nineteen oh three, which there were some very interesting and important things that happened in nineteen oh three. Number one was the Wright Brothers First Flight. Number two, we had Ford Motor Company that was introduced, and then probably to me, the most important was Harley-Davidson was introduced. We, we enjoyed those three. We were fortunate to have Mayor Pro Tim do a welcome for us over at the Wright Brothers. We got a special permit, and we were able to go have all these motorcycles assembled, about a hundred and sixty of them, at Wright Brothers. Thank you so much for letting me present this to you. I'm going to hug you now so we can look at the video. We're very, very proud and very excited that Johnny Waters, a local artist, musician, did this theme song for us, and I hope you enjoy it. Cameron, if you go ahead and play that. did this theme song for us, and I hope you enjoy it. Cameron, if you could go ahead and play that. Mayor, I still have a seat for you and a helmet. Not been able to get around there yet. Thank you all very much for indulging. Come on that quick. Mayor, wait me just a second. Let me call Dana up here. Dan, we appreciate you all very much. Third year, no incidents, no accidents. Appreciate it. And we thank you all so much. You do a great job.
Thank you all for what you all do for us.
And certainly a huge thank you to Commissioner Gray for all he personally does to make this event a success. And I like the forward thinking and broadening the partnerships to continue to grow. You keep setting really lofty goals, but smart planning to broaden it, and I think going to continue to excel with those goals and really making a huge difference in the lives of children in Dare County. So thank you all involved. Thank you personally. All right, we will move on then to new business item number, oh, sorry, old business. Old business, very important old business. Under old business, we have the possible appointment to the vacant position on the Board of Commissioners. So just as a recap, that probably most people don't need a recap. The vacant seat, or the seat beside me, was vacated when Commissioner Reubottom resigned to move to Currituck. The board went through a process of accepting applications. We had a number of well-qualified applicants that put in their applications to be considered for the board. And through two rounds of voting at our November meeting, we found ourselves in a deadlock between Colleen Ominy and Skip Jones for that seat. I would like to personally say, I don't think we, I don't think it's happenstance to find ourselves in the situation we are. They're both incredibly dedicated to the town. I commend both of them for their continued desire to serve and broaden the capacity in which they serve. If you chose to look at their applications, they both have given a lot to the town of Killable Hills. And I think where we have found ourselves prior to tonight, again, is because we have two well-qualified candidates. So I will take a minute and ask the board, is there any change from where you were from our November meeting with your vote?
Not with me, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, not surprised. We've then really are left with two supporting Colleen and two supporting Skip for their one vote that we get, which really leaves us in a position of either leaving the seat vacant because we can't come to an agreement if we're still locked at two and two, or try to do something to resolve the tie between the two and move to a coin toss, which is just standard. It's been used in multiple arenas in the past. So I'd like to ask for discussion now on where the board would stand regarding a coin toss.
I support us finding a resolution tonight, albeit a coin toss or any other idea that comes about. I voted for Skip because I believe that he's the best person to fill this seat. I have complete confidence in Colleen that she would do a great job. We did get a lot of emails and support from both people, and I do think that we got to see just how qualified and what great candidates we have. But I love the support that we received over this last month. Leaving it up to chance is not the desired resolution, but we essentially are picking between two winners. And when both choices are winners, I don't think our town's going to lose. I'd like to, if we flip the coin to get this done tonight, if we can before it's down.
Mr. Gray?
You know, I've been a lot of soul searching about this and a lot, put a lot of thought into it. You know, one of the reasons that I selected Skip was because he had served for so long on different boards and with the town. And, you know, I think that if we went with a coin toss, I think that would negate a lot of my consideration in picking him because of that. So I would not be in favor of a coin toss. A lot of people would say that that leaves us in a quandary, inasmuch as having four members. I haven't found that we've really had that many cases where, you know, we've been with differences of opinions. I don't see it as a huge stumbling block. I see it, you know, sometimes it would come into play. But I think if we just went to chance with a coin toss or drawing straws or whatever, you know, means people would come up with to solve that, I think it would probably negate one of my biggest reasons for picking Skip to start with, is the long history that he has for the town. I too feel just like you all. We had so many qualified, not just these two, but we had so many qualified people that had come forward. It really impressed me. We had some top-level executive people that came and applied for this, and I just, I was so thankful for that. But no, I wouldn't favor a coin toss.
At the last meeting, I said I wasn't in favor of a coin toss either. I've thought about it a lot since then, more so, I think, than a lot of the issues we've had to discuss. There are a lot easier times coming to a conclusion. And I think in the end, for me personally, I tried very hard, and it wasn't until today that I decided to put aside everything, all the other issues about this, and especially personal feelings, and do what is best for the town. In this case, I think the best thing for the town is to go ahead with the full board. I don't like either choice. I'd rather not have a four-person board, and I'd rather not flip a coin. But just to reiterate, I think, I'm seeking for myself, if I want to put the town first, my decision today would be to flip a coin and get a five-person board, which is what we're supposed to have. And whoever ends up serving, it'll be for a year, and then they can decide in November who else is going to be up.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments on this, and as far as where I stand, I had shared that I selected in my previous votes in November for Colleen. I stood behind that today and still do. Though I have been very outward in my comments that Skip and Colleen are both well-qualified. Colleen has served the town nearly ten years, first really with even serving on the Dangerous Animal Appeal Board. She's also attended, I mean, there's very few meetings that she's missed in the last almost eight years. And with that, she is so well-schooled in what happens here at the town because she hears our discussions, she goes to the planning board meetings very frequently, almost all of those as well. So when you have that knowledge base of that experience as well, I think it would serve the town very, very well. And then, of course, most recently stepping up to be the Chair of the Community Watch and getting a grassroots initiative off the ground. So I am confident in my support of her. And I truly have been waffling, and I, you know, that's a taboo word sometimes to say out loud, but I have been waffling on, do you flip a coin or do you not flip a coin? Because as I stated in the November meeting, I don't like it either. I don't like the optics of it. The only thing that it does is create, it's a piece of functionality to get a five-member board seated. I think we have been fortunate over the last year that there's been three times, if you count the November meeting, that we had votes that came down to a three-two. So two in one favor and three in the other. So the vast majority of our votes were not of a controversial nature. But I do struggle with moving forward, leaving the seat vacant and knowing that we could be finding ourselves in that position. And so after giving it considerable, considerable thought, I'm in support of a coin toss because I would like to see us have a fully constituted board. And I also think by stating that I think Skip or Colleen would serve the town well, I think both of you would do a great job. So with that, there's no reason for me not to support a coin toss because I would be happy serving with either of you. So that's. I think from a procedural perspective, I would like to call a vote on the coin toss. If we were unanimous, I'd say we're moving forward with consensus, but since there seems to be not, and that's okay. I just think we should be on the record. So I'm going to make a motion that we proceed with doing a coin toss for filling the vacant seat between Skip Jones and Colleen Ominy.
Second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, with that then, if we're moving, we are moving forward with the coin toss. I'm going to turn it over to our county attorney to handle the procedure. Did I say county? Oh, sorry. I didn't take my hat off, fully. Our town attorney, I'm so sorry. Somebody will tell, they're going to watch this and they're going to tell them. I'll have an email tomorrow morning.
Call them up, or we've got to draw some straws here, guys.
Oh, God, it's not even a coin?
Oh, no, we're doing both. We got, we got both methods here. We're going to draw straws. Whoever gets the long straw is going to call it, call the flip.
It's like football.
Here we go. That's what I was just saying, that's what the ref feels like. Pretty sure. All right, draw again, guys.
Oh, come on!
I got the long one. We all so good.
I picked first, you picked second. Multiple straws? Oh!
All right, so what is that? What am I going to do?
You're calling it. Heads or tails. Ready? Calling the act.
Hey, wait, don't tell anybody.
It's hits.
I'll have you. Do you mean it's like a public record?
The reason, if I may explain, the reason for the straws and the points. This idea actually came from the Board of Elections to settle the issue that they had in Manio when the two candidates had the same number of votes, which tells you that every vote does count and is important. So the quandary was, okay, who calls? Because as you know, at football games, the visiting team calls. And even at the Super Bowl, there is a visiting team to say. So that's what the Board of Elections did. They did the straws to determine who calls. And that was the reason for the extra drama.
Okay, so based on that, I will make, excuse me, make a motion that we appoint Skip Jones to the vacant Commissioner's seat to be sworn in at our January meeting. There's a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Thank you both for being civil and really representing our town in such a fine way. This was an uncomfortable process to a degree, but I think we'll be better off for it. And I really admire how you both kind of handled yourselves. You both are leaders. And I really appreciate how everyone conducted themselves through this process. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you both very much. Okay, now we will move on to new business item number one. Recommendations for acceptance of bids and related matters for the following capital projects. The elevated water tank replacement, including drainage improvements and dedication of new easement in front of the fire station at sixteen thirty-four North Proton Highway. The public-private partnership sidewalk and drainage improvements project at the Dare Center, seventeen hundred North Proton Highway. And the final phase of the Public Works Complex Capital and Trudy Project. Pete is already up there, ready to roll, so Pete, I will turn it over to you if you'd like to make some opening comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to start on a port of personal privilege by daring to make a motion that we do a civility graph to graph the Killable Hills brand of civility at the National and some other levels of government. Moving away from that, I think I heard seconds all over the house. It is our pleasure, and I speak on behalf of myself, with American Engineering, our primary subconsultant, Dewberry Engineers, and town staff as well, to bring this very large and long-awaited and complex matter before you tonight. You have lots of paperwork in front of you, and I'm sure the town manager will lead you through the individual steps that you need to take. Our elevated water storage tank at the fire station slash old town hall site is fifty-five years old. It's time to replace it. We've taken bids to replace it. The bids have come in favorably. We've evaluated those bids. And we recommend that they award to landmark structures, Romanu One LP, the low bidder. And that speaks for itself, all of the funding appropriations and the details are before you. In conjunction with that, since the site where we're going to be locating, with your pleasure, of course, the new elevated water storage tank falls right on top of an existing North Carolina DOT fifty-foot drainage easement. In order to vacate that easement and make way for the only satisfactory place to put the tank, we're going to be spending a goodly sum of money to reroute those drainage facilities around the front and south side of the fire station. And that will require your authorizing, the manager to sign a deed dedicating a new drainage easement along that front and south side route. And that's, will also have the side benefit of increasing by about four hundred additional percentage or it's a five times, a five-fold increase, the drainage capacity from the corner of the Dare Center to the port where drainage flow leaves the fire station site. So we're going to get an important piece of storm drainage work accomplished with this as well. And finally, since we were going to be in the business of doing storm drainage work in this vicinity, we decided to try to get some economies of scale by rebidding what we called US one fifty-eight Sidewalks Phase Three from two thousand and sixteen, where the bids came in somewhat higher than we thought, but we did not at that time have an expression of participation from the Dare Center owner. So we abandoned that project for the time being. Since that time, we now have a written expression of participation from the owners of the Dare Center, knowing that they'll get aesthetic and drainage and pedestrian access benefits from the project. So they are, they've committed to participate. So, they are, they've committed to participate at $125,000 level, which is better than the 90 to 100,000 we were looking for on them in 2016. So, your appropriations for that project, for which the low bidder is Hatchell Concrete Incorporated, includes in its funding source, among other things, that $125,000 contribution. So, that's sort of an overall summary of what's involved. The recommendation memo that I provided, Steve, and his to you, give you the details. And so, I'll stand by for any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much, Pete. Comments, questions from the board, discussion? I think I've done an exceptional job putting this together.
Yeah, I think so too. I have one question, but I called the town manager today, and she addressed that very nicely. So, I'm super proud of her.
My question is a little bit silly, kind of, just for me. The capacity of the new water tower is 400,000 gallons.
Yes, sir.
And the current one is 200,000.
Yes, sir.
How much bigger will the sphere be than what's currently, than what we currently have? It'd be, I'm sure it's not full of worse, I mean, that'd be twice as big, but just so you get it.
In rough terms, the average dimension of it will be 30, 35% bigger. If you take 1.35 in cubit, you get to about 2, which is the doubling of the capacity. The shape will be a little different, but it's a somewhat spherical object on top of a single pole. It will also be much prettier. Not that our present-leg tank is ugly, but it will be a much more aesthetically pleasing design with a single pedestal flowering out into a large bowl, with, of course, the download upon it.
Does that cost include painting of like a beach ball on top of it?
No, sir, it doesn't.
Nobody's buying my idea.
I like the council.
I like the beach ball.
I like the beach ball.
Beach ball.
I don't spell the word.
Brilliant, I guess. I think, on a more serious note, I think we, we owe some thanks to the Washington Prime Group for their contribution of $125,000 towards the sidewalk project.
Thank you for that. I'll pass it on to him, and Mr. Alan Parlier, their regional director, would be here were not, were it not for the fact that he resides in Raleigh and they're a little tied up right now. He had every intention of being here, and I'll pass your thanks on to him.
Thanks, do that.
Okay, so a motion would be in order. I guess we'll do a couple of motions here. The first would be to accept the bid to the elevated water tank replacement and associated drainage improvement projects in front of the fire station as presented in the packet. That could be a motion if you would like. That would be a motion. And a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye. The second associated would be to approve the US 158 sidewalk improvements, Phase 3, as presented in the packet.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
This one would be nice.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you very much.
And the final item under this section was item C, the final phase of the Public Works Complex. Are you Donald Booth? Welcome, Donald, thank you for being here.
Thank you, pleasure to be here.
Any opening comments that you'd like to share with the board when we have the packet?
As you, thank you very much for allowing us to be here. Donald Booth with DJG, Julie Dunk's architect with us as well is joining us this evening. It is absolutely my pleasure to be here to recommend the final phase of the Public Works Complex development that started now almost 15 years ago in its vision. And this particular phase includes the renovation of the animal control facility, which has been out there from, for over the last 25 years, pushing 30 years, with minimal renovations or improvements that have been included over that timeframe, as well as the expansion of the former fleet maintenance garage into a solid waste facility for the town. As I mentioned, the original plan, master plan, was developed back in 2003, 2004. And then, two phases have been commenced since then, and this would complete this vision that was started about 15 years ago. We did procure bids on the project, went out twice due to lack of participation in the first phase of this, of bidding on this. A.R. Chesson was the lone bidder on the project. They have experience at this project site, having most recently completed the fleet maintenance, new fleet maintenance garage, as well as the expansion of the police storage facility that is onsite there, as well as the aesthetic improvements on the administration building that was there. So, they are fully aware of the site, the parameters there at the site, and are committed to begin work on this project should you find that to be acceptable. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have as well.
Thank you so much. Questions, comments, discussion?
It's a big project. It looks really good. I looked it over pretty closely, but a lot of it's over my head. I think I get the gist of it, and I think it's great we'll be getting this done.
It is really exciting to think that we'll be bringing this project to some closure and just having the needed improvements. Okay, then a motion would be in order to accept this bid as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, thanks.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Thank you. Exciting. A lot of exciting things going on.
Okay, under new business, now we move on to item number two. This is an appointment to the Historic Landmarks Commission. We have two applicants, Clyde Harold Jr. and Kevin Riley, that have each submitted applications for consideration to the HLC seat, which was left vacant by Jerry Farless's resignation. So, open the board for discussion on this appointment. Comments or discussion?
I think John said he had somebody in mind.
I said, I liked them both. Kind of what each had qualities. I liked Clyde Harold, Harold. I thought we could dominate him. He seemed to have a long history of visiting the town, moving here. I sense enthusiasm through the applications, and he really wanted to find a way to kick back. Kevin was great too, but Clyde kind of presided with him a little bit more. So, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Clyde Harold to the Historic Landmarks Commission.
I'll second.
Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move on now to committee reports. Commissioner Gray?
First off, I would very much like to thank our town staff for all we put into our Christmas event last Saturday. It was a lot of fun, and when the children left, happy and well-fed. I certainly appreciate that. Every year is great, every year this room looks amazing. I mean, considering what this room was like a few days ago compared to the way it is now. I know a lot of first, a lot of folks worked very hard, so thank you very much. I'd like to thank Colleen Almey, Commissioner Gray, all the folks who participated in our first community watch walk last weekend. I was, I couldn't make it, I felt pretty bad about that, but it was a great first step. And I look forward to seeing a lot more activity with our community watch. I'd like to see it grow. I've read some of the comments on Facebook, all the appreciations of people who we were met and talked to. And it seems to be a really positive perception and a lot of enthusiasm to see it grow. So, thank you, Colleen, Terry. And I will be there this weekend, Colleen, 11 o'clock. And has a meeting point been established yet?
We're still going to do Sun Realty because we have some extra streets we haven't covered yet.
So, everybody here is invited to join us, 11 o'clock, Saturday morning. Sun Realty, we'll do some more neighborhood canvassing to get the word out about our community watch. I have to thank Sue Kelly, I wish she was still here. But during our Christmas celebrations, Sue stood out there on our sidewalk and represented the Community Appearance Commission. It was not much nicer outside on Saturday than it is right now. And that was a real act of sacrifice, a real act of showing commitment to our town. And I was in here nice and warm, I thought, doggone it, I should have gone out there and helped her, given her a break. Sue did a great job, and it was not the best conditions to be out there, so kudos to her. Our next Community Appearance Commission will be this Thursday, 8:30 in the morning, in this room. And our Kick Butt Subcommittee, for anybody who doesn't know, it's a subcommittee of the Community Appearance Commission that really is focusing on trying to reduce cigarette butt litter in town, specifically on our beaches. That group is going to meet on the January 16th, 6:00 PM, at this room as well. All meetings are open to the public. You don't have to be a resident of Skilledevo Hills to come. Anybody who wants to come and share their ideas is very much welcome to do so. I've seen a lot in the news very recently is plans that the federal government may be looking to be coming, come in and do some seismic testing offshore. I know I've seen Mayor Kahoon has really been outspoken and nagged at about this. And I kind of wanted to bounce this idea off everybody. It should be looking at making maybe another, we've made several statements in the past in opposition, but maybe it's time to make another one. I'm awfully worried about it, as everybody, most folks here really are. And I just want to kind of bounce that out as we're out, is maybe we should make another statement and coordinate with the other municipalities in the county to send a unified message that Dare County is really worried about this, proposes offshore seismic testing. And it's very concerning to us and threatens our livelihood. And I also like to assure our town staff, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you, everybody.
I don't have anything from the tourism bureau today because our meeting hasn't happened this month. But I have something for you in January regarding that. And we have a, I'm on the steering committee on the tourism board. And we're having a meeting tomorrow morning. We're going to continue discussion on some property, possible property purchases. And I'll give you the news on that as soon as it's made public.
Thank you. One note from the Government Education Channel. I served on that committee, and you all may have seen in our consent agenda, there's an item this evening related to that. And basically, it's a procedural thing. Currently, the committee, based on the operating guidelines or procedures, that committee is not allowed to do any moving of money between line items. And so, basically, under the consent agenda, the, when you make a change to operating, the operations contract, you have to go through every town again in the county to get approval to make that change. And so, that's what's basically in here. So, if you, if the committee was recommending moving money from one line item to the next, this would allow that latitude to do that without having to go back to every town in the county to do so. So, you still have to stay within your overall budget that you've approved, that dollar amount. You can't go beyond that. But if it's just moving money from one line item to the next within a fiscal year, you would have the ability to do that on that committee. So, just figure, throw that out under committee report. So, if you had any questions when moved into consent agenda, that's the background for that item. So, that's all I have. Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner Gray?
I think, as John had said, the neighborhood watch was very successful. I think Mrs. Affelman was out there, as well as Colleen and some other folks. And I know that in talking, we weren't able to cover as much ground as we thought we could as quick as we could because there were a lot of people that wanted to do a lot of talking. And Colleen had an excellent observation in doing this. She said, you know, there were a lot of people that were just excited to see somebody come by and talk to them. She said there were some elderly people that hadn't seen anybody, had anybody visit. And so, it was really a feel-good thing, and it did a lot of good. And I thank you guys for doing that. This is something that has been long overdue as far as getting some sort of neighborhood network into town. And I think it's going to pay big dividends for us. Again, I want to echo John's comments about the Night with Sound. Staff did an excellent job as always, and very, very nice. That's it.
Yeah, I want to make sure, if you haven't seen it, tonight might be a great time, well, it might be raining, to see the decorations up over the pond, the reindeer in the sled. It's a really, really cool thing going out over the pond. And there's been a few other additions to the decorations over there this year. And that's going to continue, we're going to continue to put some money into the budget for that each year. And I want to comment on Saturday night also. My wife and I came over here for a while, and I was impressed with the crowd when we got here. The kids were out the door, and they had hot chocolate and hot cider and all kind of good stuff for people. And it was, it was a pretty busy, pretty busy time, and everybody seemed to have a great time. And hey, my wife and I tried to take a walk as many days as we can, if weather permitting. And sometimes I'm glad when it's raining. And I, I've noticed part of the walk, lately we've been walking on the sidewalks along the bypass. And in front of some of the businesses, there seems to be quite a bit of litter. And some of them, they're well taken care of, the grass is trimmed along the sidewalk, and there's no litter. They must be picking it up on a regular basis. And in other ones, not so much. There's, you know, litter, but pretty unsightly. There's even one place where the, there's a trap in the sidewalk, and the grass is actually going across and met itself in the middle, so. And I know a lot of people think maintenance belongs to somebody else, but I think if it's, if their business, I think they might want to try to make it look a little better and keep the, keep it looking a little bit nicer for the town. And one last thing in regards our procedure tonight for choosing a new commissioner. I, I want to emphasize that the people up here have, we differ on issues. But we don't differ on how we do it. There's no animosity here, there's no problem between any of us. And there won't be with Skip gets here, and there wouldn't have been if Colleen got here. And I, and you saw by the, the expression of affection when this took place, that this is the kind of board we want to have. And contrary to anything you might have heard about the things that are going on that people should be upset about, don't bother being upset because there's nothing going on. I want to make that clear. I'm perfectly satisfied with the way this went tonight. And perhaps maybe in the fall, Colleen will be joining us. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, excuse me, that we all have a lot of respect for each other, and we're going to continue to do that. We will differ on issues, but we won't differ on how we do our jobs.
I'll say. We will move to Mayor's agenda. I have a couple of items in your packet and then a few other items not in your packet. The first item that's in the packet this evening is the proposed 2019 calendar meeting schedule. This would continue to keep our meetings starting at the 5:30 start time. We would keep two open public forums as we have historically done. One would be on Wednesday, April 24th, the other on Monday, October 14th. If we needed to add other business to those meetings, we could. But the main purpose of those meetings would be open discussion with the public in a more casual atmosphere. You can see there's only one meeting proposed in January. This meeting would also have an opportunity for us to have our first budget discussion to start providing some guidance to the town manager on things we may want to... some guidance to the town manager on things we may wanna see in the budget, so she can start working on that. I will say, in preparing this calendar, I went back and forth a little bit with, um, Debbie on the calendar, um, and I'll disclose, on January twenty-first, I am having, uh, knee replacement surgery, so that's part of why I wanted to condense and have the first budget discussion at this meeting in January, um, and then our next meeting not until February twentieth. If we did have something come up that would require us to schedule a meeting, um, call a meeting in between January fourteenth and February twentieth, we certainly have the latitude to do so. If that would be available, I would be here. But, um, that's how the schedule has come into creation. Any comments, discussion, questions?
Sounds good. Motion?
Okay, a motion would be in order then to adopt the schedule as presented.
Sure. Second?
All those in favor, please sign with saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item in your packet is a resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to pass legislation to address the problems associated with increased use of e-cigarettes in the youth population. So, some of you know my, um, day job is the Public Health Director and the Department of Health and Human Services Director for Dare County. And so, I had the opportunity to present this resolution, um, first to the Department of Health and Human Services Board, and then upon their recommendation, took it to the Dare County Board of Commissioners for adoption. If you're not following what's going on with our youth, youth population with e-cigarette use, it's, um, becoming a true public health issue. A recent survey, uh, demonstrated that fifty percent of middle, middle schoolers are admitting to having used or use e-cigarettes, and seventy-five percent of our high schoolers. And those are alarming figures considering what's in e-cigarettes, um, and the concerns of, uh, what else they may be adding, or someone else may be adding. Commissioner Winley, uh, serves on the Saving Lives Task Force, this was also, also shared with the task force, and after that meeting, he proposed that we bring it forth to Killable Hills for us to adopt as well, uh, to tailor it to the town, just to, to continue to promote that something more needs to be done. The CDC, um, is starting to take a stronger look at this. One of the big concerns is the marketing that goes around these products and the flavored, there's like cotton candy and, um, bubble gum and flavors with these e-cigarettes that are really targeting children. And I don't know too many adults that rush out to get a cotton candy treat, but certainly it's very appealing to our youth. So, I think much tougher legislation needs to be in place, um, for the companies that are manufacturing these types of products, as well as those who are marketing them. And then ensuring, because they're not legal for children currently, um, but I think stricter legislation needs to be in place to make sure that we're safeguarding I D checks and, um, protecting the access and availability of these products to adolescents. So, thank you for suggesting we put this on agenda, our agenda, and with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution as presented.
So moved.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please sign with saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon.
And then a few more items, um, I too wish to thank the staff, um, we have an amazing team of elves in Killable Hills. That's, uh, I was trying to schedule a, a meeting here last Thursday, um, kind of last minute, and when I emailed to see if this room was available, I was reminded that the elves would be hard at work, um, and I certainly didn't wanna interfere, so we had an alternate, uh, meeting location, but they really did an amazing job transforming this meeting room, um, into a winter wonderland, and then having the sleigh ride to see the beautiful light display. It was just absolutely a very special time, I was able to bring my boys, and, and we just, we loved it, and we enjoyed it with friends. So, it's a lot of hard work that staff puts into this, and this is completely a, um, a staff and volunteer-driven initiative, um, so, thanks to the, the amazing elf team that did this. Bless you. I also would like to share, um, at our January fourteenth meeting, I would like to invite Officer, um, Chris Keen, if he's available, he is, um, a young child and he may not be available, but this past Saturday, um, my son and two other fifth graders from Nax Head Elementary who live in the town of Killable Hills, um, they had requested some police assistance to film a educational video for their Dare project. And Dare has changed over the years, it used to be exclusively about, um, saying no to drugs, and it's expanded now to a broader decision-making model, and trying to help children guide in making much better decisions, and thinking through why they're making a decision, what are the consequences. So, the Nax Elementary fifth grade students that were participating in Dare had the option to write a paper, or do a video. Not surprising, our guys chose the video to do. But they, they had to present three different skits and teach a lesson from those skits, and their skits, two of them, they wanted to include a police officer, so, um, thank you Chief and Assistant Chief for arranging, but, um, I had not met Officer Chris before that, and just what a pleasure that was. He was so patient and encouraging with the boys, I can't wait for them to share their little project with, um, with everyone, but if he's here, um, I would like to invite the boys, if, if, if it works. But either way, we can invite the boys, and if, if it works, we're Chris's schedule. So, that was just a really neat experience. Give you a little preview, though, my son was in the holding cell. I said, I better never see you there again. John, to the seismic testing, thank you for bringing that up. I received an email this afternoon, actually, um, from one of, um, the folks that I worked with when I went to DC to advocate against this more than a year ago. And, um, they're with the Coastal Federation and, um, uh, I'm drawing a name, um, an extension of Surf Rider, but they were asking, um, and I told them I had a meeting this afternoon and I, or this evening, and, and I'd try to see if I can have some broad liberty. They have significant concerns with the legality of the most recent actions, um, to allow this seismic testing and, and the manner in which it's come about. And so, they're trying to gauge interest from towns, um, in coastal communities, uh, regarding challenging the legality of this action and opening up the testing. It's a, I don't have enough information, uh, though, I think what, what I'd like to ask tonight is for the Latitude with the Board to gather more information, um, consult with our town attorney and town manager, and if it seems like it's congruent with issue R continued opposition of seismic testing, um, to possibly join in with a letter of support questioning the legality. Again, I don't have enough details, and it may be that time is of the essence, so, as I get those over the next couple of days, could work with them, share something, um, if you all are okay with me proceeding in that fashion.
Absolutely.
So, we'll be back in touch as we have more information. Okay.
Are you saying, I just, just to be clear, are you saying that it wouldn't be just a, um, resolution against seismic testing, but it would be a statement that it's illegal?
Well, not the seismic testing, but the process in which they've most recently made the decision to allow the five companies to begin.
Okay.
Yes. Certainly, good question. Two other things, one, um, John, I know you're expecting a new family member, a new family addition in the next few weeks. What's, dates?
December twenty-first.
Just around the corner, so, uh, just wanted to, uh, wish you and your wife and your children well, um, with that, and can't wait to see pictures.
Be a busy Christmas.
It will be, a very exciting Christmas. And, and last, uh, I don't think I can say it any better than you did, as far as, um, with what, um, transpired tonight regarding the appointment, but again, Colleen, thank you so much for, uh, your willingness to serve, um, and your continued service, because I know you'll continue in, in the capacities that you are and, and help the town. And Skip, congratulations, and look forward to swearing you in, in January. And that is all I have this evening. We'll move on to Town Manager's Agenda.
Just one item, with, um, Skip's appointment this evening, no objections from the Board, we will put his planning board seat on the, uh, January agenda?
Very good.
Yep.
Anything else?
No name, thank you.
All right.
Think it probably will work for us, so.
Okay, hey, we have so many wonderful applicants, maybe someone too.
You know, that's funny, because, you know, if, like John was saying, you're picking somebody just a little while ago, there's two people, and they're both qualified, which waiting to go, we run into that pretty often here, we really do, it's like, there's, there's nobody to say, all these people, nobody, and there's this one person standing out, I mean, it's.
We competitive, they're like, same way.
Yes, we have some qualified applicants, uh, when we can get them, a lot of times we have, we struggle getting the application for some of our boards, but, uh, maybe this publicity later will help that out.
Town Attorney's Agenda?
Uh, a few items, I'm, I'm, John, congratulations, thank you, what numbers?
For a child.
Three myself, so, alright, good job, buddy. Alright, so, um, uh, number one is in the agenda packet, and, um, at the October eighth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Board, uh, Mr. Randy Appleton, who's an owner at two thousand and two four North Virginia Dare Trail, had submitted a written request, uh, to the Board to have his property removed from the, uh, Beach Nurishment MSD. I was asked to report, if you will, research the matter, make a report to you guys, um, for consideration. That report, or opinion, if you will, is attached, uh, to my, uh, agenda item. Mr. Appleton is also here. I, I will note that you'll see, and, and in reading, that from a procedural standpoint, there needs to be a decision made on the request, but there will have to be a public hearing held in order to make a decision. So, um, you know, we can talk as much as you want about the request from Mr. Appleton, my response, we can do that tonight, um, but we certainly, it would probably be wise to go ahead and motion to set a public hearing, at least, so we can get this back in front of you for the actual public hearing as soon as possible. There's no harm done to the applicant, as you also see, if a decision were, if a decision were made by you guys, and the affirmative to allow the request, it would not take, uh, place until the end of the fiscal year. There's some procedural points there, in terms of how you guys wanna move forward tonight with what we have in front of us, but at the very least, I would suggest we motion for a public hearing, a public hearing.
So, the public hearing is inevitable, right?
Right, correct.
Required, I, I should say, yes. So, I guess it's, uh, we, um, decide to what extent we discuss it tonight, tonight, or we just leave it for the public hearing?
I see Mr. Appleton's approach, if, if he would like to make a comment or two.
No, I'm here, I'm here at your pleasure, if you guys wanna talk about it tonight, I, I'm prepared to do that, if you wanna defer it, like Mr. Bornell said, I have no problems with that, I just, I would like the opportunity to tell you why I'm here, and why I'm here at this time, but it doesn't have to be denied, it can be at the public hearing, whatever you prefer.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure, the Board?
I, I kinda agree with what Mike's saying, you know, that we need to set the public hearing, and, and possibly wait until then to discuss it and formulate any action.
I also agree, and, and waiting for the public hearing, make it more formal, more public, give people a chance to research a little more, think about it, so, we can come back to it.
Okay, well, I will make a motion that we go ahead and schedule this for public hearing at our January fourteenth Commissioners Meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please sign with saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, we'll see you back in January.
Rock, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And I got another email as well, this is not, um, on my, on, in the package tonight, and I have not, I wanted to read the minutes, and I'll get to why in a second, um, it would not have affected this hearing, however, because of what I'm about to talk about. Mr. Michael Midget, if you recall, at our last meeting, we had a text in, in front of us, it was regarding, it was submitted by Joe Lamb regarding the, uh, installa-, or the allowance, if you will, the seven-foot-high chain link fence. We were deadlocked, so another reason why, having a full board would be a good thing, but we were two and two. And, um, I wanted to look back through the minutes, uh, Mr. Midget raised something interesting, and it was just, again, a request from the crowd, he was here, he, he saw what occurred. A two-two vote, a deadlock, the motion generally fails and dies on the floor, and we had discussed that. And, uh, what I could not remember, though, is whether or not I remember Commissioner Gray brought up the idea of tabling until we got the full board. I could not remember who made the motion, I could not remember who actually made the motion for reconsideration. I'm now seeing it's, it's Commissioner Gray. Uh, the question posed is this, in, under Robert's Rule of Order, which of course we've adopted, if a motion dies, or if a motion fails, then the winning vote, if you will, is supposed to be the only voting party that can make a motion for reconsideration. And Mr. Midget pointed out that Mr. Commissioner Gray's vote was the failing vote in that particular case, 'cause he voted for, and the motion died. Now, the nuance here, though, is that, and why I would like to conduct some more research, I knew it wouldn't be on the agenda for tonight, because we wouldn't have the full board, but anyway, um, I would like to, to do more, more, more research. That is generally related to situations involving recusal, or somebody abstaining from voting, you know, granted, Robert's Rule of Order applied to our, our General Assembly, it applies to, you know, a hundred and eighty member boards, I mean, it applies across. So, two and two, a deadlock board, uh, because there's a vacant seat is not, not quite as common. So, um, I would like to see if there's anything there that maybe provides some kind of guidance here. I would also like to reach out to the School of Government. Um, I thought bringing it up tonight may be important, though, because, again, I, Ms. Mary, somebody may have some form of comment through experience, um, sitting on these boards with a situation such as this, so I would like to bring it up for comment as well, if you guys have any, have anything to say regarding that, so, it's an interesting...
Probably would have at this point his opinion, and I think it would be better for that to clarify. With that said, does that mean that we should not put the fence on the January?
I think I can, I can get us an answer, I believe, I, I'll put a call instead of emailing the School of Government, so that, that way I'll expedite it some, but, um, I, I think it's worth, it's worth looking into, and we should do things the right way.
I think Michael made a great point.
I, I, I agree, I mean, it, 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 certainly, I've researched, I haven't, but all the time I could been to, but that's what holidays do, but anyway, um, it, it is, he did, he did, he raised very...
So, anyone could have made a motion.
Correct.
But they didn't, I, I don't understand.
Right, right, that's exactly right, I understand what you're saying, they absolutely said, um, alright.
Thanks for that information. Thank you, Michael. Okay, we'll move then to Consent Agenda.
Yes, thank you. First item under the Consent Agenda is the minutes from November the fourteenth, second is the October twenty-eleven report, number three is a modification to the twenty-eighteen-nineteen fee schedule, this is to add a fee for building permit reinstatement. Number four is scheduled public hearing on request and amendment to Chapter one fifty-three zoning, this is from Mr. Eddie Goodrich, um, the, um, planning board considered an amendment, which was requested by Mr. Goodrich, and the attached memo from Meredith provides the details on the planning board's review and discussion. There have been some modifications to Mr. Goodrich's original request, which he has agreed to. So, approval of the Consent Agenda will schedule the public hearing for this amendment Monday, January fourteenth, um, twenty-nineteen, at five-thirty. Number five is replacement appointment to the Killable Hills Local Firefighters Relief Fund, um, longtime member Jerry Frolick, um, has resigned, and, um, Chief Tilly is requesting that, um, retired police captain Mark Evans be, um, selected to fill this vacant position. Number six is, um, budget amendment to recognize additional contributions for the DISGOF received year-to-date during fiscal year, um, twenty-eighteen-nineteen. And number seven is the inter-local agreement for government and education channels draft revision, as was alluded to earlier by the Mayor. Staff recommends approval of the Consent Agenda as presented, and the motion will be in order.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Sure, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please sign with saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. You're welcome, thank you. Real quick, before we move on to the next public comment, I did forget to mention that the, um, holiday drive collections, uh, continues for a few more days, if you have anything to drop off, um, we're still collecting for the food pantries and for the animal shelter. Glad we didn't have to go into closed session tonight, because the room is really filling up wonderfully with supplies in there, um, but, uh, if you're able to drop off anything, please do, we're collecting until December nineteenth. With that, we move into the second time this evening set aside for public comment, is there anyone wishes, oh, I see Colleen and Skip, their hands are up, Colleen.
Skip, would you like to go first?
Draw, draw.
I'm gonna stick with the two of them.
Draw, draw.
How strong.
I just want to say that I agree with the board that Colleen is an excellent choice for a board seat now or in the future. I feel even more strongly about that after the past, our interactions and conversations after the last couple of weeks. So I just want that to be known. Also, pretty excited about the change in the subject, but the new bike path or multi-use path, whatever it's going to be in front of the Dare Center, we've been looking at that for a long time. That's been one of my big pushes, is going familiar with Mike and our engineer Pete and I'm sure Steve, beat that horse to death. But it's just such a well-traveled area for pedestrians and bicycles with all the large communities around it, the kids and everything. It's just, to me, that's going to be a huge asset. It's been kind of a big deal to get it through, and I'm just excited to see it happen. So thanks, thanks everybody for the work, and thanks for the board for getting us through a pretty awkward situation and nicely, and a well-done man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleen?
All right, cross out everything he said. Yeah, let's start with the board stuff. Thank you all. Number one, thank you all for serving. It is not easy. Let me just tell you, it is more than just sitting in the chair and answering a couple of emails and a couple of phone calls and reading a couple pieces of papers. It is a full-time job, and it is real, and it is important. And when the position became available, that was one of the things that drove me to submit my application. And I didn't do it right away, I thought about it for a long time. I looked at the pros and the cons, and Skip and I both have been very involved in the town for a long time, and I knew it was ahead for whomever happened to get the seat. But I was willing to serve and still am. So although it didn't happen this time, you're not, you're not rid of me yet. I want to say again, Skip's going to be great. He's going to be great, and you guys are all going to be great, and everything's going to be fine. I read, I read some comment earlier that sort of alluded to this fact that, oh my gosh, Kill Devil Hills has these two factions, and they're battling each other, and they're digging in, and it really bothered me because I don't see that. And I know I don't see that, because I'm here at every single meeting. I know each of you personally now, didn't always, but I do now. And although you are allowed to have differences of opinion, that's why we have a board. You want to bring everything to the table and flush it out and find the best way to move forward. So if people have the expectation that everybody should agree, that's wrong. And if people have the expectation that you will only vote one way, either because of who you know or who the applicant might be, whether it's one of us, somebody in the public who wants an ordinance change, that should not happen. And I hold the four of you to very high regards to be way better than that. And you are way better than that, and you prove you're better than that. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. I actually called Skip this morning, and I was like, dude, uh. Like, how do we make this better? And, you know, we talked for probably 10 or 15 minutes, and we said, you know what, here's the deal. We are two people who are willing to throw our name in the hat and serve, period. Not a lot of people do that. We had nine applicants this time, one dropped out, that's okay. I reached out to all of those people who applied and said, hey, we need you on the Neighborhood Watch Committee, so if you really want to do something, come along. For local government to work, we all have to work together. And I think in the years past, you have seen such a change in the demeanor of what happens in this room. Like I said, we can disagree, but we can do it with a handshake and a smile and move on and know that everything that we're doing is for the best of the town. And especially this evening, I would like to say to you, thank you for putting the town first. See, I waffled too. Am I in, am I out? Is this the best? Is it not the best? Is Skip the best? Is he not the best? Like, blah, blah, blah. The town was set up to run with five people. And you had the people you felt strongly about, you guys had the people you felt strongly about, but you honestly said, I'm going to put myself aside and do what is right for the town, and we're going to put somebody in that seat. It wasn't easy. Everybody struggled with it. Skip and I struggled, but we didn't want to win or lose by a coin toss, that's crazy. But you were willing to put that discomfort aside and make a tough call, and I applaud you for doing that. Yeah, that's enough of that. Move on to the Neighborhood Watch. Super fun Saturday. Super fun. We had five people come out. I didn't feel so bad about that. It was 11 o'clock in the morning, it was really cold and windy, and people were Christmas shopping, and who wants to answer the door when they don't know what's there? We downed our Kill Devil Hills t-shirts that gave us a little credibility, so they didn't look like crazy people. But I wanted to share two of my personal takeaways from it. Number one, spay and neuter your cats. We have a thousand cats in Kill Devil Hills. I was shocked. Number two, I knocked, I walked up the stairs to this house, and I knocked on a door, and I waited a couple of minutes, and this older gentleman came to the door, and he was like, what? And you know me, and I'm like, hi, I'm Colleen from Kill Devil Hills Neighborhood Watch. And I handed him the flyer, and he was like, oh, okay, thanks for that. And I left, and I walked around the corner. It was cold Saturday. He had a t-shirt and a pair of shorts, and he ran down his stairs around the corner, and he took the flyer I gave him, and he goes, this is really nice. And I said, well, thank you for sharing that. And he goes, no, no, this is like really nice. He's like, this is good stuff. And I said, well, thank you so much for sharing. He goes, didn't know the town worked that way. And I was like, a lot of us do. So that was like a good feeling for that. I had one older woman answer the door and say, no one comes to visit me, and would you like to come in for some hot cocoa? And I was like, no. No, I didn't say that. God, we love it, but we have a lot more places to go. But just, you know, and I mentioned it to Terry after, after our walkabout, I said, if we visit, no matter how group our, how big our group is, if we visit 50 houses and three people say, thank you, like sincerely and really mean it, and like want to hug you afterwards, that's huge. So I really want to, and one person also said, oh, I saw all your stuff on Facebooks. That also made me really happy, too. So I really want to encourage everybody to come out if you can. I know the weather's difficult, I know the timing in the month is difficult. We are not scheduling like this five-hour event where you got to be out there all day. If you can commit an hour just to knock on a couple of doors or leave a flyer that says, hey, we're concerned about you, we want to look in on you, here's how we want you to be safe, and here are your options in case something happens that you don't feel so great about. If you can reach a couple of people and really feel how they respond, I think you'd want to do it every weekend. So I really want to invite everybody to come out and join. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Colleen. Who else would like to speak this evening at public comment? Anyone else? Well, I wish everyone happy holidays and happy new year. We won't see you till after the new year, so here's to a good 2019 ahead. And with that, call for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm done. Done?
Second.
Second. All right, any other comments? All those in favor, please sign the same "aye".
Thanks, everybody, for coming out.